We are all here, Mr. Wenzel, some Florida sheriffs, and again, thank you.
Well, thank you, Council President. Well, then, members of the City Council, appreciate your time this evening. I will try to, since it is, the hour is getting late, I'll try to make this fairly brief. I know you've all had the opportunity to review this presentation as well as the CIP over the last couple of weeks. This evening, Kathy, if you want to go to the next slide, this evening, just want to go over a few different points. Talk about the operating budget versus the CIP or the Capital Improvement Plan. Want to talk a little bit about our fiscal strategy. Talk about, just remind the City Council about the Council's strategic goals and objectives. Talk a little bit about our financial policies and how that relates to the CIP. Then talk a little bit about beyond the CIP. And what I mean by that is, you know, this is a five-year CIP, but it became apparent during the planning process that five years was not going to be sufficient, a sufficient timeframe. And we, you know, just at a real cursory level, looked out the next five years because there are some major projects on the horizon. And then we can talk a little bit about next steps. This is an unusual process with COVID and with the city manager's impending retirement. And so we'll talk a little bit about what we want the next steps to be. Go ahead, Kathy. You know, in terms of operating budget versus the CIP, the operating budget funds the ongoing operations of the city. These are the programs and services that we deliver to the community really on a daily basis. And we'll talk about this a lot more during the budget process, but as many of you know, our operating budget is subject to what we call levy limits, which does restrict the amount that we can spend. The Capital Improvement Plan, on the other hand, it really funds the capital improvements of the community, the infrastructure, the buildings, parking structures, those types of major projects. And within the five-year CIP, we're looking at next year's capital budget or the capital budget for 2021, and also a capital plan for the next four years. The CIP is funded primarily from what we refer to as fund balance, which is really like the savings account of the community. Those are where, when we don't expend all the operating budget or operating revenues exceed expenditures, those funds go into what we call fund balance. And those funds can be used to fund future one-time capital projects. We also issue debt annually. So we borrow money on an annual basis in order to fund many of the projects within the Capital Improvement Plan. And just a reminder, and again, when we talk about the operating budget, we'll talk more about this, but debt service is exempt from the levy limits, which is why sometimes we can fund capital projects and increase spending on the capital budget, but we aren't able to often do so, at least to the same level with the operating budget. Next slide, Kathy. In terms of the Capital Improvement Plan, the CIP funds are used to buy, maintain, or improve fixed assets such as buildings, vehicles, equipment, or land. It's considered a capital expenditure when the asset is newly purchased or when money is used toward extending the useful life of an existing asset by at least one year, such as repairing the roof on a municipal facility or doing an extensive remodeling, just as we did with the, with City Hall. In order to be included as a capital project, the cost must exceed $5,000. And costs are usually one-time in nature. And we will talk more about that, both in the capital program, but also when we get to the operating budget and whether costs are ongoing or one-time in nature. Next slide, Kathy. The CIP allows us to anticipate and plan for future capital needs. You know, it's very important for us to do that so that we can anticipate what future needs are going to be, so we can either adjust our borrowing to accommodate those future expenditures, or perhaps we want to make some adjustments to allow those expenditures to be made. New projects should be added in what we call the out years of the CIP. We don't like to take a brand-new project that hasn't been in a CIP before and plunk it into the first year of the CIP. It does happen, and because priorities do change, projects do come up that weren't anticipated, but we really like to add those new projects in the latter years of the CIP rather than moving them right to the front of the line. We also oftentimes talk about projects in the CIP as new projects versus maintenance projects. So new projects are new facilities, something that we may not have had before, versus maintenance projects which are maintaining existing assets. Most of the projects in our CIP fall into that maintenance category. We're maintaining city facilities, fixing those existing facilities up. We're maintaining roads. We're maintaining our storm sewer system or sanitary sewer system. So most of the projects within our CIP fall into that maintenance category. And also, within our fiscal strategy, we need to comply with state and council debt and fund balance policies. And we'll go through those in a little bit of detail and how this current CIP affects those a little later in this discussion. So just real briefly, I'm not going to go through and read these next, these next slides, next slide, Kathy, but these are the council's strategic goals, and they can be found on our website. They can be found within the CIP and many other places. But go ahead and jump ahead two slides, Kathy. Excuse me, that slide. So how we use these goals is that these goals give staff direction or guidance in submitting projects for inclusion in the CIP. So when we know that, for example, that it's a goal of the City Council to encourage and facilitate affordable housing, we know that we should start planning for the inclusion of those projects within the, within the CIP. We saw that happen last year where that was a priority of the City Council, and we saw funding for affordable housing make its way into the, into the CIP. Similarly, with our sustainability goals and carbon neutrality, those projects made their way into the CIP. So again, the City Council's strategic goals provide staff direction on projects that we should consider including in the CIP. Now, that doesn't mean that the inclusion of those projects or the exclusion of other maintenance-type projects that we need to, we need to continue with, such as our street maintenance program, which, you know, that annual street program takes up somewhere between $6 and $7 million of our CIP and is the, is the largest single program within that, within that plan. Do you want to go ahead to the next slide, Kathy? So just as a high-level overview about how this CIP is being funded, at least the general fund projects within the plan, this plan uses about $3.05 million in fund balance for the projects anticipated for 2021. So that is about average in terms of the fund balance that, that we've applied, and that is consistent with the City Council's policies on fund balance, which do allow fund balance to be used for one-time capital expenditures. The 2021 plan in the CIP requires approximately $9.5 million in new borrowing, and we'll increase our debt service by about $331,000 or 3.7% in 2022. So as I mentioned, these are 2021 projects that we're talking about. We would borrow that money in 2021, which means our first payment on that debt would not occur until 2022. So that's why that impact is in 2022. It would cost the owner of $174,000 house about $11 per year in increased property taxes. Next slide, Kathy. So one of the City Council's financial policies is, has to do with unassigned fund balance. And again, that is, you know, basically the funds that are in our savings account or our rainy day fund, however you like to refer to that, and that aren't committed to some other purpose. And the Council's policy says that any unassigned fund balance in excess of 15% of the next year's general fund expenditures can be used for, to fund capital expenditures. The goal within the Council's policy is to be at 20% of the subsequent year's expenditures. So the graph on this screen, the box or the rectangle that's kind of orangish in color represents the range of 15 to 20%. And as you can see, over the course of the last 10 years, our fund balance has consistently been greater than the 20% goal set in council policy. And that when we get out to years 2024 and '25, the later, latter years of this CIP, even with the dollars that are being invested in capital projects, we remain at about 19% of the subsequent year's expenditures. So this CIP does comply with the City Council's fund balance policy and keeps us in that 15 to 20% range as required by that financial policy. Next slide, Kathy. One of the Council's other goals has to do with total indebtedness. And the policy indicates that total indebtedness shall not exceed 5% of equalized valuation, which is the state requirement, but the City Council's policy is either more restrictive than that and indicates that it shall not exceed 3.5% of equalized valuation. So on this slide, the top kind of goldish line represents 5% of our equalized value or the, the upper limit imposed by state statute. The orange line represents 3.5% of our equalized valuation, which is the upper limit of the City Council policy. And then the blue bars represent what our indebtedness would be for the last five years, but also throughout the five years of the CIP. So as indicated by this graph, we would continue to comply both with the state and council policies in terms of our total indebtedness. Next slide, Kathy. One of, a third financial policy of the City Council is that our net direct debt should be less than or equal to three times the operating revenue of the city. Now, on this particular measure, we are starting to get fairly close to that upper limit in the latter years of this, of this plan. So we can see that the gold bar, or gold line, excuse me, represents three times the operating revenue of the city. And when we get out to 2023 and 2024, our net direct debt is approaching that line, but it does not go over, and we see that it drops back down in 2025. So this is, you know, again, this is part of the reason that we do financial planning, is so we can take a look at these different operating or financial indicators. And if we see an area that needs some adjustment, we can make those, make those course corrections before we exceed those policies. Next slide, please, Kathy. And one of the, one of our additional and the last financial policy that I'm going to talk about is that the tax levy or the levy for debt service shall not exceed 25% of the total property tax levy. So the blue line on this graph represents 25% of the property tax levy. The gold bars represent our existing debt service. These are funds that we have already borrowed and we are already obligated to pay. The orange portion of those bars represents the new debt service. That is the debt service on the, on the debt that we will be issuing as part of this CIP. So as you can see, these, you know, our debt curve going forward based on our existing debt, we start to pay off debt, so the, our debt service goes down. But that's also being replaced by our new, our new debt. And throughout the course of this, this capital plan, we do continue to comply with this particular measure of our debt service, although, as you can see, our debt service does continue to increase throughout the five years of this CIP. Next slide, please, Kathy. So again, just at a high level, the total non-transportation-related projects in this 2021 through 2025 CIP that are funded by the general fund or funded through the property tax dollars, and our tax levy-supported debt equals about $26.7 million. So those projects, non-transportation projects, total about $26.7 million. And then total non-transportation-related projects funded by the general fund, fund balance, and tax levy-supported debt that we deferred from this CIP. So these are projects that were submitted by departments for inclusion in the CIP, but we simply could not afford them within, to be included in the CIP within our existing financial policies, totaled $41.5 million. So as you can see, we received many, many more requests for, for projects to be included in the CIP than we were able to fund. And in the six years that I've been here, this, I guess, the magnitude of this was, was greater than I've seen before, in fact, much greater. And that's why I felt an obligation to take a look out over the next five years as well, and how we can then schedule some of these projects so that we are able to afford them. So we have done that internally and believe that, or I believe we've come up with a plan to be able to do that by working with the department directors and scheduling those projects out in a manner that, that makes sense. However, it doesn't leave a lot of room within the CIP, even over the course of the next 10 years, to be funding other types of, of projects. And I think that this is important and, and part of, you know, my obligation as a finance director and looking forward, making sure that, that, you know, we, we have this on our radar so that we can plan accordingly and not find ourselves in a position where we have some sort of a financial issue five, six years down the road, and there are many, many more projects that need to be funded than we're able to, able to afford. Next slide, Kathy. So as, as City Council knows, we distributed the CIP electronically on May 21st. We were supposed to have our first work session on May 26th, but now it's June 9th and we're having that work session. The Plan Commission is scheduled to review the CIP at their meeting on June 15th. Transit Commission is scheduled to review on June 17th, Waterways and Parks on June 24th, and then we've tentatively scheduled the public discussion on City Council action for July 13th and July 14th. Those dates are not etched in stone, particularly the 13th and the 14th. And, you know, at this point, Kathy, you want to look to the next slide, please? At this point, certainly be interested in hearing from the City Council on what process you all would like to take, I guess there isn't the next slide, what process you all would like to take in reviewing this CIP, because this is a somewhat unusual year with our inability to meet, to meet in person. Certainly happy to go through projects with you. Certainly understand that we probably don't want to do that this evening, but certainly happy to go through projects as we have in the past, or if there's some other process that the City Council would like to take in, in reviewing the CIP, certainly willing to and interested in hearing that from you all. Since this CIP was prepared, the tragic events that we've all witnessed in Minneapolis and talked about this evening occurred, and there's been a good deal of community discussion, and we heard some, from some members of the public last evening regarding body cameras. Now, body cameras or body worn cameras were included in this CIP within the land buildings and equipment portion of the CIP. And they were planned for implementation, the body worn camera piece planned for implementation in 2023. It was actually a 2022 through 2023 project. The 2022 was planned for in, replacement of our in-squad video system. In discussions with the city manager, he has indicated an interest and a willingness to move that project forward or advance that project and has asked staff to begin the process of reviewing the video systems for both the in-squad video as well as the body worn cameras, to begin reviewing vendors for that project. And if we can get that project to a point where we think we can move it forward, we're, we're looking at advancing that project a year to be responsive to the requests of community members. So with that, I would be happy to answer questions.
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't want to delay the evening any longer than necessary, but in looking at that graph with the tax-supported debt service at 25%, maybe if you could pull that up, this one? Page, page five, that, that one. I see in 2025, our tax levy is going to go up. What's going to happen in 2025? Or are you just putting that wrinkle in the line so that we stay at under 25%?
No. What happens is, when we calculate 25% of the property tax levy, the property tax levy includes that debt service. So that, because our debt service is kind of jumping a little bit between 2024 and 2025, you also see that blue line jump a little bit as well. So that's reflective of the additional, of the additional debt service.
May I have a follow-up? Having been part of putting the policies together back several years with Councilmember Von Hayden, I get, it appears that on some of these limits that we've imposed or, or passed, that the, there's not a lot of room. I mean, the room that we have under those guidelines is shrinking a bit. My, I guess my question is, what, what is, what has to go wrong in order to put a future council in a bad spot in terms of having to read, relax those limits or to make some significant changes to those debt and tax levy limits?
Well, I'm not sure Councilmember Klinghammer, Klinghammer exactly what you mean, what needs to go, needs to go wrong. But I will say that when I look out again at the five years beyond the horizon of this CIP, the replacement of our parking structures is going to be a significant driver of the CIP and potentially future debt service. And I think that that is going to need to be, how we pay for the replacement of those downtown parking structures is going to need to be a conversation that occurs probably over a number of years, because in my opinion, I don't believe that within our existing financial policies, the general fund is going to be able to pay the entire burden of constructing structured parking within the downtown. And that's already anticipating that Tax Incremental District Number 11 contributes $10 million to the construction of those parking facilities. So I think that, again, and that's why we need to start having these discussions and looking out ahead, is I think we're going to need to have some serious discussions about, about how we're going to finance those structures and alternatives to, to simply issuing debt to do that, because I think it's going to be very difficult to just issue debt and still be able to keep up with our ongoing street maintenance and other infrastructure programs. So again, that was really part of my reasoning in, in extending the planning horizon for, for this CIP is to, is to bring those discussions to the forefront, so we have a significant amount of time to be able to, be able to prepare.
Thank you.
Thank you, President Weldon. Thank you, Mr. Wenzel. Guess my question is, is, it kind of comes back to the table of content in a way at the beginning of the CIP, but I notice like things, some things are included one year and not another in terms of like broad categories, like different funds. So for example, there's, there's only a couple tid districts that are, that are identified for projects. So last, but also last year there was the library improvements on 490, that was obviously a big subject last year, but it's not included at all this year. Does that essentially mean that we're not going to be spending any capital dollars on the library in the next five years? Or what exactly does that mean?
Well, good question. What it means is that, not that we're not going to be spending any money on the library in the next five years, because certainly there is a large project out there. But that was a 2020 project, when we intend to, we, you know, the plan is to borrow that money in 2020. Now, it may mean that we don't do that, but the City Council nevertheless has already appropriated those dollars for the library, so they don't need to be re-appropriated as part of this CIP. What it also means is that there are no additional capital projects on the five-year horizon for the library beyond the renovation and expansion that was already approved. So it's similar with the other, the other tid districts is, is that, you know, some of those districts have reached the end of their expenditure period. Some of those districts simply can't afford to spend any additional dollars, or there just aren't any or there just aren't any other projects that were contemplated as part of the project plans for those districts. So we don't include a district or we don't include a fund, um, if there aren't any projects that are contemplated, um, uh, to be, to be funded from that source.
I guess I have a, a follow up to that, um, perhaps more of a request, I guess. Would it be possible to, to get a full list of all possible funds so that we could see which ones are not getting any funding?
Um, yeah, we can absolutely give you a list of all our capital funds. That's, that's not a problem. It's not a question about which aren't getting any funding. They're, you know, if they're not in there, no projects were submitted to be funded from those sources.
Yeah, I guess it just kind of, it gives us a good, I feel like it just gives me a better picture of, of, you know, all the, the different funds and, you know, what could pop up on future CIPs and, you know, because obviously the city council could also have a, you know, a thought to fund something that maybe we didn't even know there was a fund for, or I don't know, but just, just a informational thing mostly. So thank you.
Yep, not a problem.
Councilmember Gray?
Uh, thank you. So I do, to kind of follow up, uh, on your question about ongoing meetings, I do, you know, I went through this CIP and I have a few notes and questions, but I recognize that we've been at this for over four hours, so, and, uh, which is fine. Um, so, so I would like a chance to, to talk about that. Um, but then I also, so putting my vote for that, uh, my support for, I don't know if I would be in that work session or what that would look like, but, um, to, to answer some specific questions. And then also, um, we talked briefly about the body cameras and I just had a clarifying question hopefully for tonight. You know, tonight during our meeting, we got, and all afternoon, we got a flurry of emails, probably 20 or 30 of them, uh, asking us to defund the, um, the police department, um, or I don't know what they're asking for exactly, but, um, something along those lines. So I was wondering, the funds for the body cameras, would that be additional funds or would that be within the police department fund and reprioritization for the body cameras? I'll also just say, well, my thing that when, um, I correspond with Dr. Funk, I believe she said that she was looking more at reprioritization of funds rather than additional funds for the body camera. Um, so I'm just wondering if those would be new funds or just, uh, different reprioritization of the funds within the police department for the body camera?
Um, I, I, I think the answer is, is, is neither. Uh, if you go to, uh, I'm trying to get, if you go to, to Fund 434, which is land building and equipment, it's on page 61, uh, starts on page 61 of the CIP, um, there's a, a, a project about, uh, two-thirds of the way down, um, it's project number 434-02, oh, no, excuse me, 434-023, which is public safety video systems. And within this project, uh, $555,000 was planned in 2022 and $250,000 in 2023. So this, this is a $805,000 project that includes both the replacement of the in squad and interview room video systems, um, as well as the addition of body worn cameras. And these, these, you know, the, the reason the funding is split is we're not sure that we can get it all accomplished, very frankly, in, in, in one year because it ends up being a large project. But the, what I believe the city manager has suggested is that, um, we begin the process of researching which, uh, which vendor, uh, we would choose because there are different, uh, different vendors out there that have, uh, uh, video systems. And if we can get that process far enough along, um, that we would move the funding, uh, the 2022 and 2023 funding, I believe all into 2021. Um, you know, that's really the soonest at this point, um, you know, we're midway through 2020, um, that we would be able to, to, uh, implement, uh, the replace of the in squad video, um, as well as the implementation of the body worn cameras. So it's, um, you know, it's not additional funding, uh, it's not even reprioritization of funding, uh, it's really just moving, uh, the funding that we've already got in the CIP, uh, forward, um, by really by one year.
Okay, that makes sense. And I do remember reading that in the CIP, so, yeah, just moving it up. The third option, got it.
That's right.
Is there any other questions or discussion? Councilmember Gray?
Yeah, thank you, President Welton. Um, yeah, looking at this calendar, I mean, I think it would be helpful to have another work session sometime before, um, council action and, um, you know, I know we, uh, with our operating budget, we decided to have a hearing, you know, two weeks before or something like that. We, we actually voted. I'm not sure if we really have time for that this year, but maybe we do. Um, but I feel like the operating budget is just as important as the CIP, so maybe we want to consider doing that. Um, I have a feeling, you know, we would, there would be interest in that, the community at least from, from certain folks. Um, but, uh, but I guess on a baseline level, I'd be interested in a, you know, a work session for us to, to maybe hash through some of the comments that we get from plan commission, transit commission, waterways and parks commission reviews before we, um, I guess, yeah, that, that would be what I would be interested in.
Thanks, Carrie. Uh, I would be, uh, in support of what, um, Jeremy just laid out as far as, you know, us coming together again, perhaps, um, again, to kind of work through the details and then, um, coming up for action. Um, I think a plan B that I would ask for is maybe a, um, a recorded overview of the CIP presentation and then council members could check it out at their leisure, um, and then citizens could look at it too. I know that you're going to be giving this presentation, um, probably like six times, maybe more, um, so sensitive to that, but just given our truncated, uh, meeting schedule, that could even be a nice alternative, um, for council to get a presentation in that way. Um, the other, uh, question that I have is, and maybe you would have this in a longer presentation, is really discussion around refinancing our debt, um, and if there's any other, I guess, debt strategies that we might consider with the CIP for, um, just trying to maximize, uh, low interest rates and, yeah, so just eager to learn about that.
Okay, that sounds good. I mean, what I'm, what I'm hearing is certainly a desire, um, to, uh, to have a work session. So we'll go ahead and, uh, take a look at calendars, um, for, um, after the, uh, other boards and commissions have reviewed, um, at least there, uh, there are portions of the CIP and we'll, we'll try to get something scheduled. Um, as far as refunding or refinancing goes, um, council member Manuel, that's something that we take a look at with our financial advisor every single year and, um, and where the, where there are opportunities for, um, savings, um, we go ahead and, and refund that debt. And, um, if you go back, um, through, um, the, the last several years debt issues, you can, um, often see in the presentations where I'm talking about, uh, refunding, um, certain debt issues and how much the, the savings are from those issues. So that's absolutely something we take a look at, um, every, every single year. Um, um, but we're, we're getting to a point where, um, many of the debt issues that are eligible for refunding, um, were already issued at fairly low interest rates. But I do think that there'll be a few issues, um, this year where refunding will make sense, um, and, uh, the taxpayers of Eau Claire will, will be able to realize, um, some, uh, some substantial, uh, interest savings, uh, as a result of those refundings. Um, one of the differences between municipal debt, uh, the bonds and the commissary notes that we issue and, um, a home mortgage or an auto loan that you might go out and get is that we can only refund or refinance that debt, um, during certain periods. So when we issue a promissory note, which is, uh, basically, um, debt issued over 10 years, uh, normally we can only refund that in the last year or two, um, of that debt issue. Um, similarly with the bonds that we issue, which are 20-year bonds, um, oftentimes those can only be, uh, refunded, um, maybe within the last five years or so. So each one of those instruments describes, uh, when it can be refunded. So we are, you know, we are somewhat restricted on, on when we can go ahead, um, and, and refund or refinance that debt, but, uh, do rest assured that we take a look at that every single year.
Any other discussion? Councilmember Gray?
Thank you, President Welton. Um, Mr. Winsens, I know the, there's that kind of 10-year window is discussed a bit in the first couple of pages of the, the CIP. I guess the, the Hobbs improvements and the Hobbs, uh, facility expansion, I guess I'm wondering if those are, and given the long timeframe before those would be implemented, they have about five, six, seven years or something, is, is there like a strategy for private fundraising that accompanies that and, and working? I'm assuming there's a lot of work with the partners that, you know, have the needs for that expansion or for the, the improvement of the facility, but, um, do you have a picture of what that, that's looking like right now and, and are the numbers that we're seeing what the city is essentially expecting, um, to, to have to pay for as opposed to maybe there's additional funds that are, um, being fundraised that, that you would be aware of already?
Um, I believe that the, the project requests, um, do not include, um, fundraising from private entities, but with that being said, that's one of the reasons to start these discussions is, is so that, um, is so that we can get some direction from the city council maybe on some of these projects. There, you know, again, using the Hobbs ICRI and as an example that, you know, that these projects, you know, that project, um, council might say we need to, you know, fund, um, 25% of that through, through private fundraising from the, um, from the, uh, users of the facility, uh, if we're going to proceed forward with that. Um, you know, that's certainly a funding, a funding strategy, but, and again, part of the reason for looking out forward and bringing these to the intention of the city council is so that we can have those discussions and if we need to do that fundraising, um, then, um, we'll be, we're putting those, uh, groups on notice and staff can start planning accordingly.
Okay. Yeah, thank you.
Any other discussion? I don't see any. I think, um, we're good to go for now and, uh, Mr. Winsens and staff will get back to us. Some calendars are off.
Yeah, absolutely. We will, uh, take a look at calendars and, um, and try to get, uh, a work session scheduled, um, you know, sometime, um, you know, after, uh, probably June 24th, which is when waterways and parks is scheduled to review, uh, the CIP. And if we need to push, uh, the July 13th and 14th dates back a little bit to accommodate that, uh, that shouldn't be a problem.
Thanks a lot, Jerry. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
You too.
Thank you very much. Take a good night.
This program was brought to you by a cooperation between Newsworks and the City of Eau Claire.